It's five thirty. Now, call the city council regular session into order. We do have a quorum and the first item on the agenda is to do the pledge of allegiance. And councilman, ask you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have a pretty full agenda today. The next item is the invocation. We have with us today Reverend Broderick Sargent of the Bethel CME Church. Welcome to city council.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight. I was taking the advice of my wife and she said to me as I got ready to leave, come to Stevieville, she said, you know, you're doing the invocation, right? She said, don't get up there and do one of them long drawn out prayers that you do at New Bethel every Sunday. She said that you got an hour and forty-five minute drive. So if you start praying by the time you leave the house and by the time you arrive in Stevieville, you being praying for everybody in Stevieville and the whole county. And all you have to do is say amen. So let us pray. Eternal Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come and fellowship and take care of the business of the city. We thank you, Father God, for these hollow chambers and all of these your servants who has come and rendered their life to the progress of this community. We ask Father God that you give them strength and courage to make the proper decisions that will lead these consecrated walls to make a difference in the city. We thank you, Father God, for all the ones that are here tonight. We ask that you bless them individually as well as their family in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. We have some presentations to make in our recognition tonight. So I'm gonna come down here and I'm gonna read them to you. And a bunch of people here. The first one is DECA. Y'all come up and join us up here. We have Jocelyn and her high school DECA members. And I'm gonna read this proclamation. You all take a picture. Whereas DECA is a career and technical student organization with over two hundred and twenty-seven thousand members worldwide. Whereas the mission of DECA is prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management of high schools and colleges around the world. Whereas DECA is a student organization that encourages the development of business, marketing, and leadership skills in high school throughout through classroom instruction, student conferences, and competitive events. Whereas DECA prepares the next generation to be academically prepared, community oriented, and professionally reasonable, responsible, reasonable to your point. And whereas DECA has approximately nineteen thousand student members in the state of Texas and ninety-six student members at the Stevieville High School. And whereas the city of Stevieville wishes to join the Stevieville High School DECA chapter in celebrating and promoting DECA in the community, now I therefore, Doug Savine, Mayor of Stevieville, Texas, proclaim November as DECA month. And the city of Stevieville honors the community to applaud the city, the Stevieville High School DECA chapter, and chapters worldwide for their commitment to preparing and developing future leaders of Stevieville and beyond. Good ladies and ladies.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
The next item we have is Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority.
All right.
Y'all come up here. We have Brida Nguyen. Brenna Nguyen, excuse me. Come on up here. We'll read proclamation for y'all as well. Whereas members of the South Central Region of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated are celebrating Charter Chapter at Charleston State University on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. They did that already. Whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc. is an international service organization founded in nineteen oh eight on the campus of Howard University in Washington DC. Its global membership is composed of nearly three hundred and fifty-five thousand distinguished and successful women who exemplify excellence in their communities and enjoy their efforts to exert a positive influence on society by proclaiming excellence and leadership skills and advocating for equality and greater opportunity for people everywhere. And where dedicated to the enduring mission of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc., the members of the Charleston State University chapter represent the highest ideals of civic service, are committed to excellence and are excited to expand sisterhood and service at Charleston State University and in the city of Stevieville. I, Doug Savine, Mayor of Stevieville, Texas, commemorate the addition of the new chapter at Charleston State University's South Central Region Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc. And in its sincere best wishes to all those associated with this noteworthy organization for continued success and their good works. I hereby set my hand affixed a seal today for Stevieville, Texas. Get a little closer, ladies.
Thank you.
Come on in. We met this one. The sorority one's up front. Yes, turn sideways. There you go.
Okay, y'all ready? One, two, three. Great smiles. Keep it up. Okay.
Hang on. Hang tight. Hang tight.
We also have a proclamation by Dr. Wu from Charleston. See her now?
She is.
She is up here.
They have a presentation to do.
They have their own presentation.
They have your slides.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Ija Wu and I am the Associate Professor of Marketing at Charleston State University. And I want to thank Mayor Savine to give us this opportunity for us to talk about the Targeted Targeted Project. And let's welcome the student Maya Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maya Kelly and I'm a junior marketing major at Charleston State University. I first want to thank each and every one of you for giving me the opportunity to come out and spread awareness about the Targeted Project. I know a lot of you are probably wondering, what is the Targeted Project? Next slide. The Targeted Project is a student-led business. It's fully committed to providing all Charleston students with a hands-on experience while integrating university traditions into high-quality Targeted Products for all employees, staff, alumni, shareholders, and stakeholders of this community. The college business has fully invested into this project. The Targeted Project wants to help all students grasp the true meaning of being a part of a profitable organization before they graduate. All of the proceeds go directly back into other college business organizations so they can do things such as have conferences, have their speakers come, and even plan events in the near future. I became a member of the Targeted Project through my returning class with Dr. Wu. She first told us about the project on the first day of class and I was immediately interested. I decided to go up to her after class and ask, how can I become a member? She told me all I have to do is come to the next week and show my interest and they can quickly find me a spot. I then shortly after became the social media marketing and product development specialist for the Targeted Project. Although it has been a short amount of time, I feel like I have made a significant amount of progress throughout this project. I have done numerous amounts of tailoring around the university which has helped me become more confident in my public speaking skills. I also have been doing a lot of graphic designing and signage for I have also been doing a lot of graphic designing and signage to do promotional flyers and social media marketing for this project. In our meetings, we talk about new product development each week. There are three Ps when it comes to new product development. Popularity, popularity, and pricing. After we come to a common ground, we solve which product will best fit our target audience at the moment. We then decide if we're gonna put their product out for the new catalog year. Next slide. So these are a couple of our products. We have a botox, a regular top, and a scarf. They're all made of silk. We also have a coffee mug, a crew neck sweater shirt, and two regular t-shirts that we just made for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four catalog year. Here are a list of some of our members. Although we all have different roles, we all come together to make this project run successfully. And I was just like, all you got to remember, without the community, we would not be able to make this project expand. So get ready to get mad at the class.
Just wanted y'all to know, I have one of those silk ties. It's a really nice tie. I encourage everybody to get on the line. You can scan that thing. If you don't, you can come up here and scan my barcode and or QR code and start buying tonight. It's a good program. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate what you're doing, Dr. Wu. Next item is citizens' general discussion. We have two people who have signed up. And the first one, I'll ask you to come up. You'll get three minutes. If you'll state your name and your address and you have three minutes. Rita. Thank y'all for coming, y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Rita Cook and my address is three sixteen Tanglewood Circle here in Stevieville. Tonight, I just wanted to come as the chair of the Main Street Board just to give you an update on the kinds of things that have been happening at Main Street. Before I start, I wanted to take a moment just to name the people who serve on that board besides me. Marion Cole, Julie Thomas, Jocelyn Perez, Terry Colley, Kelly Salt, and Dr. Amy Schaus. All of these people bring a lot of experience and knowledge to help us in the things that we're working on as a group. So what's in the works right now? If you've been downtown, you probably see we have banners up on our lights which look good. We have new trash cans that have been ordered that'll be coming in. Some of our sidewalks now have handicap accessibility, which we appreciate the city doing that for us. You might have noticed those little parking buttons. I always call it parking by Braille. You know, you can figure out where to park now. And then we have crosswalk striping. So those kinds of things are already in the works. One of the most exciting things, though, is that we have established some partnerships with different groups in our community. Keep Stevieville Beautiful and Eret County has partnered with us to do some different kinds of things for the downtown area. And it's kind of exciting when you get all those people in the same room and they start talking about our downtown. So what's coming in the future? Some of the things you're likely to see is there will be screens that are gonna cover the HVAC around the courthouse. There'll be some additional landscaping around the courthouse as well. There's also, the county's going to paint their lights so that they're black like our lights so that they will look similar. And also, we're going to be looking at replacing some of the existing planters around the square with a brick base and movable updated kind of planters. So those are some of the things that you should look for in the near future. The thing I came tonight to really talk to you about, though, is how we can start encouraging and incentivizing our business and property owners downtown in the historic district to maintain the historic character of our downtown. You have a document put together that's just a concept paper. It's just a preliminary beginning for us. We realize that for us to be successful downtown, it's important that everyone is on the same page. We're gonna have to sit down and talk with these business owners, with the property owners, and put our heads together and say, what can we do to maintain the character? And it's a very special character, obviously, since movies come to be made here. How can we continue to have that in our downtown area? Our downtown is really the jewel of our community and we have one of the most beautiful courthouses in this state. So it's pretty exciting to be working on this. I'll be coming back to you in the near future. If you'll please read through that. And thank you for having me come tonight and just tell you a little bit about what we're doing.
Thanks, Rita. I believe that you all are on the agenda for next week for the committee meeting. Is that correct?
All right.
So anybody that's interested, be sure to show up.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Our next item is, next person is Marshall Knute. I, you'll give your name, address, and y'all have three minutes. There'll be a clock up on the screen.
Hello, my name is Marshall Knute. My address is six one zero North Park Street in Dublin. I am here tonight to discuss Stevieville case number one eight four five one four. The case is regarding the property located at Harvard and Swan Street. We received an invoice and we, my father, brother, and I are company Kiway and Developments. We've worked here in Stevieville for a couple of years now and it's a project that we've actually worked closely with the city with for about three years now. But we received an invoice to be paid for the mowing of that property. I'm not here tonight to dispute the fact that we received an invoice. We were told multiple times, but being short-staffed, we were not able to get the property mowed. I'm here because the invoice was for the mowing of half, roughly half of a seven-acre property. And the invoice was for four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. When we asked for some more information on this, which was not very easy to do, but the company, it was a small company out of Comanche. I spoke to the individual at that company who said he got an emergency call that the property needed to be mowed. I'm not sure if that is what justifies the price. So I'm just here tonight to give any anyone an opportunity, if they would like, to inform me on the process of bidding out a project like this. I spoke to code enforcement and they encouraged me to file public records requests, which I did on November first and haven't heard anything back yet. But the deadline to pay that is coming up. And again, five thousand dollars for a couple, for three to four acres roughly in town just seemed a little, a little high. In the past, we've paid five to six hundred dollars for the mowing of the entire seven-acre property. So that's about it. I look forward to hearing back.
Our procedures won't allow us to engage in the conversation since it wasn't on the agenda till tonight. However, Jason, you'll get with him and y'all.
Our staff is working.
Okay, staff's working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next item, request for a variance from the city's demo code ordinances, section one thirty dot sixteen, sale of alcoholic beverages for the shack located three oh nine West Washington.
I'll take this one. Colby Stoker, the new owner of the shack, has requested a variance for a TABC permit. He bought this from Luke Sims and Craig Allen. They had a variance approved last February. TABC said it's not a requirement to get a new variance, but it is best practice. So we're just asking you to consider the variance so the shack can continue as they have been.
Comments? Mark, did you have a comment?
Oh, you waiting on me?
Yes, sir.
This is.
I was pointing, you were pointed at.
Okay. The only question I have about this, and obviously we've, this variance has been approved before. I don't know the answer to it. Couldn't get it today. Is there, is there any school activity at the Methodist Church that would be closer than the front door? At one point, there was a school in that back building.
Used to have kinder care. I know that.
Yeah, something like that.
Maybe not now, but they.
There used to be a stepping stones.
Stepping stones, yeah. I just didn't, I didn't know if that was still in existence today.
It used to have an after-school program in the old.
That's at the other, the bank building.
I don't commonly see people on the front side during the daytime. I mean, I don't know that I hundred percent pay attention to that. But I mean, I notice the activity on the backside, but I don't really notice anything on the front side during the day. But I don't know what definitive answer.
Okay. Well, again, I couldn't find it today either. So, but no, that was my only deal.
Anybody else?
There's a, there's a wine bar on the south side of the church.
Yeah.
It's not directly behind the church, but it's off to the southeast from the parking lot.
I guess is that, and the other question, just a general question, the three hundred feet, is that state law? Is that something that we've done here and?
That's our ordinance, sir.
Just our?
Right.
Anyone else? Anyone have a recommendation?
Mayor, make the motion to approve the variance as requested.
Motion second to approve the request for variance. Further discussion?
I just, in the original variance, the front door, it was front door to front door, I believe, as we discussed it. And there is another side door. So they could simply have people enter a different door and get around it. So I think that was the rationale in the previous discussion with this. And so I support this variance request as well.
Anybody else? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next item, consider approval resolution initiating the abandonment of St. Felix Street from the Turner Street to Charleston Street.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'll, I'll take these.
Take all of those in order, but we have to pass them individually, right?
You gotta pass them individually. I've, in my discussion, I'm just gonna do them all at once.
Good.
If y'all remember, oh, some time ago, we initiated abandonment of streets, Sloan Street, Tarleton, Turner. We did a piece of St. Felix. And so the one piece of St. Felix we didn't do at that time was St. Felix between Tarleton and Turner because there was one property in there that was still privately owned. That one's now transferred. And so we need to catch up to that piece of St. Felix. Now that will leave St. Felix public from Turner Street to Washington. And I anticipate that being the case for some time. The rest of these streets come from, as I discussed with the Tarleton administration, this piece, we began looking at at other streets in the area. St. Peter came up. They have purchased the Dairy Queen property that is now owned by the A and M Board of Regents. And so they own a hundred percent of St. Peter Street. And so we can initiate that process to begin to turn that over to them. The piece of Jones Street that's on here is the piece from Kane Street to Lillian Street that runs behind the Thompson Student Center. And it's basically a dead end. There's, I mean, it's not traveled by our normal public, university use only. And so we can initiate that abandonment. In looking in that area, Kane Street from Jones back to Vanderbilt is all university buildings or parking lots. And then, you know, Vanderbilt has bollards there at Kane to prevent you from going further. You can also come back down Vanderbilt to Neblet Street. Again, that's either university buildings or parking lots. And then if you turn north on Neblet up to Jones, again, it's all university on the apartment complex on one side and parking lots on the other. And so just in discussions with them and public work staff, just doesn't seem to be any reason anymore from, to support it with, you know, those streets and the, our infrastructure dollars to maintain them to a certain level, go through the process and abandon those and ultimately get them into the university's hands. So what we're asking tonight is for you to pass these resolutions. And what that does is start the process that'll then take all of these down to planning and zoning for a public hearing and discussion there. A few recommendations from them. And then it'll come back to council for a final vote to abandon them. And if we do do that, then we can start negotiating the, those streets.
Your discussion?
So it's during that negotiation process that we would talk about if there's infrastructure under any of these?
Yes, sir. We've already, me and Mr. Williams have met and looked at our maps. And Nick, help me out here. Most of the lines would be abandoned as well. I think you had one, maybe, where we would need an easement.
We need to retain easement for our lines, but the sewer could be abandoned. They essentially serve as a service line.
We need to retain easement for our lines, but the sewer could be abandoned. They essentially serve as a service line that only serves the university.
And so they would assume the liability of replacement, repair of.
Yes, sir.
And that's during the negotiation phase that you would be talking about?
No, that would just be part of it. If you wanted, it would be the full mill deal.
Okay.
So, but we started having those discussions.
Anybody else? Here now, let's, I'll take a more into time. Justin, you wanna do?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three R dash.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, abandoning Saint Felix Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash seventeen, abandoning Saint Peter Street.
Second.
Have a second. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash eighteen, abandoning Jones Street.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash nineteen, abandoning Kane Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash twenty, abandoning Vanderbilt.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And last but not least, make the motion to approve twenty twenty-three dash R dash twenty-one, abandoning Neblet.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for that. Fisher Killen.
Hello, Mayor, counsel.
I sit there and count the one.
Just a couple of quick ones tonight. Start with PD twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three. It's an update. This is Mr. Scott Allen. You might recall about July twenty twenty-two, we approved a PD for two properties of his. On the square, it's one fifty-seven and one seventy-one West Washington. So this is for one fifty-seven, it's parcel two nine one seven nine, it's block five, lot C of the city addition. And this is pursuant to the requirements of chapter one fifty-four dash oh eight relating to the planned developments. We have to get an update upon the anniversary date of the approval of the PD. So Mr. Allen, as you might recall, has been working with the Texas Historical Commission and the National Park Service trying to get approval for these projects. He anticipates having approval in January twenty twenty-four. If he gets approval in January twenty twenty-four, on March one is his projected date to begin construction. That would be for one fifty-seven. The building at one fifty-seven. And then he's gonna stagger one fifty-seven and one seventy-one, not do them at the same time. So one fifty-seven would be completed first, then he would start construction on one seventy-one, and that's because he has a tenant in the building that he needs to accommodate. Then in October twenty twenty-four is the target date for completion of one fifty-seven, start date for one seventy-one. And the, the most important part of this is he anticipates completing both structures by April first twenty twenty-five. Planning and Zone Commission met on October eighteenth twenty twenty-three, reviewed this modified development schedule. And by a unanimous vote of seven to zero, recommended the city council approve the development schedule. With that, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve. Do we have to have a public hearing on this, Randy?
One at a time, is what you're asking.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
No.
It's not on here, right?
We have it with the others.
It's just.
Just for an update, okay.
Updated development.
All right, I hear a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the ordinance extending the modified development schedule for the PD located at one fifty-seven Washington as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is PD twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four. It's a sister case to what I just discussed. I don't really have any additional information. It's just, again, the updated modi, or the modified schedule for the PD.
Questions?
Only point of com, so it says one seventy-one West Lingaville, but it should be West Washington, I guess.
Yes, thank you for correcting that. And this is for two nine ones, parcel two nine one seven eight, so separate, separate parcel.
All right. Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve twenty twenty-three dash O dash.
Thirty.
Thirty, development schedule for PD one seventy-one West Washington. Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Boy, you were quick, Steve.
Yes, sir.
That's a record for you.
Getting better.
Mr. McClintock, Public Works Committee.
Mr. Mayor, Public Works met seventeen October. Several items on the agenda. The first was a discussion of the, an amendment to the household waste, has, household hazardous waste agreement with the city of Fort Worth. This is a budgeted item. We've done it in the past, but this year the price went up. I'm gonna ask Mr. Williams to come and talk to us a little bit about that, but this did, after discussion, this does come to the council with a positive recommendation from the committee. Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, counsel. The household hazardous waste contract, that's a, goes back a couple of decades that we've been doing this program. And just like everything else, the cost has gone up over the last, I think it was seventeen, I'm sorry, last six years. It was around forty-seven to fifty-two dollars per person, I'm sorry, fifty dollars per person, but that cost has gone up to ninety-five dollars per person. Again, we did cover this in the budget and it is included. We did talk about how to make sure we don't go over that budget, and that is to limit the number of vouchers that we, that we issue. We had historically around fifty people would show up to this event. Last year when we had twenty people show up, when we had twenty-six vouchers go out. And so what we would do is we'd limit that to around forty-two vouchers to keep that under the four thousand dollar allocated amount for this year.
What kind of materials are we talking here?
Paints, oils, herbicides, cleaners, mystery cleaners, muratic acid is, is a big one. We see a lot of roundup. People throw that away quite a bit. And so this provides an opportunity for residents of Steenville to dispose of those chemicals properly. It's for all those things that people really don't know how to dispose of, but know they shouldn't put in the dumpster. Batteries and paints are probably our two biggest items.
Any questions for Justin? Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we approve the First Amendment to the household hazardous wa, waste agreement with the city of Fort Worth as presented.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, second item from the Public Works Committee was a proposal from IEA to design, do the design work for some stormwater improvements along Riverside Drive. This is also a budgeted item in this year's budget. You know, I'll get Mr. Williams to, to give us the highlights, but I do wanna say that this did come from the, the committee with a positive recommendation. And this, this portion, the, the design portion did come in below what we expected, so good on IEA.
Yes, sir. That, that's most of the highlights right there.
Okay.
We, this project is to design the, address the stormwater drainage issues we have at Riverside, Clifton, between there and the, the property east of Graham. So it's, it's part of what we do behind the East Side Sewer Project to clean up that area once the, the pipeline goes through right there. And this project will provide for the topographic survey, the plans, the detailed technical specifications to put that project together and put the ditch in. And make sure that we address the drainage issues behind that property between Graham and the Riverside Clifton area. And you're right, IEA is a new company that we've not used before, but we're very excited to give them a shot and see how this project turns out. And you're exactly right, it did come in underneath the allocated amount we had in the budget. We had seventy-five thousand in there, and they're proposing to do this work for just under fifty-four thousand.
I like them already.
Yes, sir.
Questions for Nick on this one? Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the professional services agreement with IEA for the Riverside Drive Stormwater Improvement Project as presented here.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item.
Mr. Mayor, final item from the Public Works Committee was a proposal from Providence Engineering to design equipment replacements at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, Mr. Williams will go over some of the deals, some of the highlights of this, but each of these three things were budgeted items. I appreciate Mr. Williams bringing them to us, getting the, the design stuff done as early in the process as we can. This one also came in slightly under budget. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we have a couple of big items at the wastewater treatment plant that we want to address this year. Some electrical items, and we did talk about in the committee meeting how we think that timeline is conservative. We think that we can beat the timeline that's in here, but we want it to be conservative based upon the material order dates that we have specifically for our electrical components. The overall budget, we had approximately, not approximately, we had exactly one point five two million dollars in the budget. What's included in that also includes the professional design services. This contract with Providence is three hundred and fifteen thousand and eighty dollars. We do feel like that's still good for us. The opinion of probable construction costs for all of these projects that are gonna be designed are shown to be under our total budget as well. And we did mention, because it's a pretty close amount between what's budgeted and what our estimate is, we do have contingencies built into those estimates as well, so we still do feel good about those, and I hope that doesn't come back to bite me. I feel like we're gonna make some good progress at the wastewater treatment plant this year. It, we've worked with Providence on several of these mechanical projects before, and we've had good success.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the professional services agreement with Providence Engineering for the wastewater treatment plant capital projects as presented.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hearings, public, public, what do we call that? Public Works Committee report.
Mr. Hasky is gonna cover for Mr. Basket, the senior.
All right. Mr. Mayor, and the Development Services Committee met on October seventeenth, and I'm gonna turn it over to Steve from there.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. We met on October seventh, or you met on October seventeenth, and we provided an update on the comprehensive plan project. And this plan is basically the, it's divided into four different phases. The first phase and phase two, they're, they're behind us, but some of the milestones accomplished there. We established a, an advisory panel, had some focus group meetings. It was downtown walking tour, focus group meetings. And then also the first meeting of the advisory panel in phase one. Phase two, again, had a, some other milestones accomplished. We established some goals, revisited those goals. Had an open house on August seventeen, twenty twenty-three. About fifty people participated in that. And then we are currently in phase three. And phase three, we will begin getting some of the deliverables. In fact, we had our first draft provided to us, and staff has reviewed that first draft, sent it back to the consultant. It's also been shared with the advisory panel. We had a open, a, an advisory panel meeting on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and that was to basically rehearse the steps that we're going to have at our upcoming open house. And if you would encourage your contact groups to attend the open house on November sixteenth, it will be at the Bond Auditorium at six o'clock PM. And we would appreciate any input that we can receive from everyone in the community, including our developers that we work with regularly. The final stage is phase four. Phase four is when we begin seeing the product of the Comprehensive and Thoroughfare Plan twenty fifty. We will have public hearings and adoption meetings, and the targeted wrap-up will be May twenty twenty-three. Good news, the project is on, on schedule and on budget. So with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve?
I don't think there's any actions to take tonight, so, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Development Services Committee.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Matty, Nominations Committee.
All righty, the Nominations Committee also met on October seventeenth, where we had a few things on the agenda. We did have, so our advisory boards have a twelve-month period where attendance is required. And after three absences, it is considered a voluntary resignation from this board. And we had a few that we had to remove from the board due to attendance, and do I have to name them here? Or we just?
No.
So, and then we also had someone filling a spot that was from someone who was being removed from the tourism visitor board. Can we make a motion? I don't think so.
No.
No, that's just reports.
Yeah, this is the report. So we also had another thing on the agenda about dissolving the senior citizens and the parks board. Darren, if you wanna get up and speak, if anybody has questions, I'd be more than happy to have you up here discussing this. But this was due to lack of attendance at the parks boards and then the eagerness of the senior citizens in their new center.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think we were a little left in the dark, some of us were left in the dark last time about, about the dissolving of the two boards. So it's just, it's just to create a new board where they would be joint.
Yes, it's creating one new board where we would have members of both those boards be a part of that process. So we did have a senior board meeting that same week as the last council meeting, and so we talked about it in the senior board meeting again and went over some stuff. I don't, I mean, I know there was an email today from a member with concerns over it, but we did go over a bunch of concerns and things in that meeting and talk about, you know, seniors consistently talk to us about wanting to get some younger people involved and wanting to do these things. I think one of the ways we get younger people is involved is to get younger people on the board. And getting rid of the senior name and having one Parks and Leisure Services board, I think will give them access to some people on that board that will help them with those ideas and help them bring some new people to the table, which is good as we move forward to a new building.
So if you join the board together, how many is gonna be in here? How many is gonna be on the board?
It's, it's still the same.
Oh.
It's seven.
I mean, there's no, it's, it's, you still have to apply, go through the application process, and then be approved through the council.
And we did talk to the board members about that, and I do think there's several board members that are in that room that I know the last time they came up and thought somebody would replace them, they were, they were kinda ready for that, and there's just not a ton of applications on that front for either one of the boards. The senior board has great attendance at their meetings, but there are several people who would be probably willing to, to step down off that board. And we also talked about forming some things within the senior citizen center as far as, they don't have to be on this board to, to help make decisions in that center or to form some new groups. They've got a five oh one C three they formed. They've got people speaking into that stuff. So there's, there's other areas for them to get involved in the senior centers, not just this board. And so we've talked about a lot of different things for them. There wasn't any extremely negative feedback. There's just concerns, I think, on making sure they're still represented on that board.
Did the rest of the council get the email that I got today?
I think it was just you.
Just me? Okay. God, I don't, just let me read it real quick. She's not upset. She just wanna make sure that we heard her. I see tonight's agenda includes the consideration for combining of the senior advisory boards and parks board for, to tar, to form a new board named Parks and Leisure Services. At our past meetings at the SAB, it was senior advisory board, it was stated that the parks board had consistently low attendance and an attitude of combining the senior board and parks together that was somewhat agreed to, but not with the knowledge of dissolve, not with knowledge of absor, absolving the senior advisory board. I believe, and I have support of other board members, that the SAB boards should stay in place to represent the senior citizens exclusively. We are not against changing or changes, however, we don't wish to be dissolved in or in purpose. And that purpose is to have an exclusive voice for the community that represents our seniors. Thank you. As written by Cheryl Wells, who is place one on the senior advisory board.
So she, and that's all fine and good. We did vote on this as a senior board. There was only one person not in attendance at that board meeting. Everybody else voted to approve the merging of these two boards. That was unanimous, so that was not at the last meeting, but the prior meeting to that. So it's been discussed in multiple meetings with them.
And you're comfortable, I mean, you're good with this, like you think it's the best choice for the?
I think as we move forward into a new senior center, we look at what senior centers will be like in the future. I mean, we're not, we're not planning for the senior center tomorrow. We're planning for the senior center ten, fifteen, twenty years. Things are changing, and a lot of people don't identify themselves with that terminology. And so we have to begin to look at those things as we move forward. And so I think having some. And so I think having some more youthful people on that board, and this is the only way to get youthful people on that particular board, I think it helps their case. They want more people to come to their events, and they want younger people to come to their, anything, they have the dances, whatever. And this is the way to get some of those people involved at the board level, so they know what's going on with that group. So I'm extremely comfortable with it.
Are you willing to reconsider it if, once we get this going and the building's built, if there's some anxiety about it to revert back to where we were?
I mean, I think that's always on the table. I think we look at those things as they come up, as things change.
I'll take that question. Yes, sir. None of this is final, obviously, from kind of our discussion today. My wish would be that six months from now, we have so much interest that we need to have this discussion again.
But the interest is in the leisure side, not the senior board. Is that correct?
For the most part, that is correct. But my sincere hope would be that as we move forward, that maybe this does begin to bring people to the table both ways, and we need to have a further discussion at some point.
Have we ever had a discussion with a group that's not meeting the Parks area? I mean, do they understand that they're not?
It's hard to have a discussion when you're not meeting, but.
And they're not coming.
I mean, I was on that board prior to serving on council and then prior to this job. And so, I mean, I've been part of that board for almost probably going on, man, maybe 10 years. There were times when we met consistently and had people there, but for the last three or four years, I mean, it's just, people don't show up. And it's not like we don't try to schedule those things in a way where it's convenient for people. We put out polls and say, what's convenient for you? What time do you want it? How, where do you want it? So we've talked about those things. But at the end of the day, everything we do under Parks and Leisure Services, especially when it relates to seniors and recreation programs and athletics, it's all, they're all very cohesive programs. They all have commonalities, and I think we can come in together and talking about those things as one board. It's not going to hurt anything, and if there's, if we need to go backwards at some point and look at this differently, then we'll do that. And like Jason said, our hope is to grow the senior program. That's the point of building this building, is to grow that program and see new faces in that building. And so I think some of these more youthful voices in the room can kind of help that process, too. We need to look at how we market things and what we program and what we're doing. So.
Anybody else have any questions or discussions? I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2023-0-31, which is the repealing of the provision set out by Chapter 32 Department Boards and Commissions, Section 32, dot 20 through 32, dot 34, Parks Recreation Advisory Board, and Section 32.50 through 32.64, Senior Citizens Advisory Board, from the Code Ordinance and providing for an effective date.
Motion is second. So the first item is to repeal. Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes.
So the next ordinance is ordinance number 2023-0-32, which is the ordinance creating a new section of Chapter 32 Department Boards and Commissions of the Code Ordinance and providing an effective date. Creating a new, the Parks and Leisure Board.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we need to circle back to the beginning. The committee did make recommendations on placing two members on two different boards and accepting resignations. So we do need council approval on all three of those.
So I need to make a motion that we accept the resignation from the Airport Board. Oh, hold on. Sorry, jumped to page 76. Sorry.
Specifically, your appointment to the Airport Advisory Board.
So, where did that go? I remember it was Craig Park. So, to fill the vacant Airport Advisory Boards, we've nominated Craig Parks to fill Place Seven of the Airport Advisory Board. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
So I need to make a motion that we approve Craig Parks to the Airport Advisory Board in Place Seven.
You made that motion?
I did, yes, sir.
A motion, second?
Second.
A motion, second. All in favor say aye. Motion passes.
And then I have a nomination for Place Seven of the Tourism and Visitor Bureau Advisory Board, and that is Kimberly Forns. So I make it. Okay. Thank you.
Discussion?
You got a second.
I got one. Further discussion? See, to vote all in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
This now ends the nomination portion of this meeting. Thank you, sir.
Bob?
Yes, sir. Okay. The Public Health and Safety Committee met on October 17th, and Captain Jeremy Lanier presented a request to us to approve the change in Order Number Three to the Systems Purchase Agreement. And after some discussion, a motion was made and seconded that we approve that change and bring a positive recommendation to the full council. And so for that reason, I would like to make a motion that we approve, that the full council approve that change.
Have a motion, or a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Anything else, Bob?
That's it.
Monica?
Mayor, Council, this is a monthly budget report for the period ending September 30th, 2023, the end of the fiscal year. Obviously, these are not final final numbers, because we're still trying to get all the AP in and get everything. This is what we had so far. So for our property taxes, we received 13,000 in property taxes in the month of September. That was 455,000 over the funds collected last fiscal year to date, and it's 98% of our budget, and that's about 173,000 less than what we anticipated. For our sales tax, we received 720,000 in September. That resulted in 866,000, or 10% more than the funds collected last year. We are at 104% of our budget, and that's 364,000 higher than what we anticipated. Of the 46 million in revenue that we received, 50% was received in our general fund, 29% was received in our water wastewater fund, and 6% was received in our landfill fund. We received 103% of our total budgeted revenues through September, and that's a million dollars more than anticipated, and that was due to taxes, charges for services, court fines, and other revenues such as investment income and donations. We received 25.1 million less in revenue than last fiscal year, and that was due to debt proceeds received last fiscal year that are not repeating. But we did receive 1.6 million more in taxes, 67,000 more in permits, 76,000 more in fines, and 450,000 more in charges for services over last year. The 59.7 million spent, 46% was expended in the water wastewater fund, 38% was expended in the general fund, 7% was expended in capital projects, and 4% was expended in the landfill fund. We've expended 61% of the total budget expenditures through September, and that's 35.4 million less anticipated. And that's due to personnel contractual and largely due to capital outlay for projects that will carry over into the next fiscal year. We spent 14.2 million more in expenditures than last year. The bulk of that is our capital outlay projects. CETA has received an overall 111% of budgeted revenue through September, and that's 21,000 more than last year to date, and 76,000 more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes and interest income. CETA spent an overall 48% of budget expenditures, which is 171,000 more than last year. And that was due to personnel and grant disbursements, but it's 954,000 less than we anticipated. That's due to capital outlay and also grant disbursements. For our quarterly investment report for the period ending September 30th, the city's total market value of cash and investments on September 30th was 58,000, This is allocated 2% in demand accounts, 1% in cash money market account, 3% in certificate deposits, and less than 1% in U.S. Treasury, 56% in TechStar Investment Pool, and 38% in our TechS Pool Investment Pool. We earned 785,000 in interest for the quarter. Excuse me. The average yield to maturity for all of our account types was 5.08% for the quarter. The average yield for just our investment accounts was 5.27%, and that compares to the average yield for a three-month treasury bill for the quarter was 5.29%. So we're just a little bit shy of our goal. The weighted average maturity in days for the portfolio was 4.13 days, so we are very liquid. Are there any questions?
Questions for Monica? I think Jess is going to get up next, and he's going to give that extra money from CETA back to the treasury. I think that's what he said, wasn't it?
Yeah, he's going to the mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Monica. Appreciate it.
Slash, when did you ask me that?
Yeah. Before we get started, I want to read something here. I'm making an announcement to the public. At a recent annual conference of the Texas Economic Development Council held in Houston, the Stevens Economic Development Authority was recognized for outstanding achievement in economic development. That's 2023. Hold that for us. CETA is one of about 30 entities awarded out of approximately 1,000 cities in Texas, EDCs, and other organizations across the state who specialize in development in their communities. It's the third consecutive award for CETA, and the first, but the first in the larger category of towns ranging from 20,000 to 50,000. So here are the three awards. Thank you for what y'all do. Ashley does a really, I mean, Ashley, you do a really good job over there. I'll turn it over to, you got pictures here.
You should have the hat on.
Yeah, I should have put my hat on. That's right.
Thank you, Mayor. That was pretty cool, and hopefully, we are making a difference in our community here that we all love, and certainly you guys are as well. And we appreciate that these projects couldn't happen without the coalition and the partnership of CETA and the city, and we look forward to some more. One of the great things, even in executive session today, we get to talk about a couple of those projects. But you know, I always have to start off with some stupid stuff, and so I'm going to do that as well. I don't want to break any tradition, because I'm trying to gear up for a fourth straight award, and that, so we do that. So I looked at the birthdays for this date on November 7th. It wasn't very sexy or very exciting. Billy Graham's birthday was today, who I got to meet his family when we were in Charlotte for a while. Christopher Knight, if you're a Brady Butch fan, you know, he was Peter Brady. Lee, and you're smiling. You know Peter. So it's his birthday. He's 66, though, if that gives you any indication how fast things go. Exactly. Exactly.
She's very sensitive about that.
And Coach Billy Gillespie, I think, it's his birthday, isn't it, today? It's, I won't give his age, but, yeah, but he's here, too. So y'all wish him. It was more fun to look at deaths. So just to cheer everybody up, we're going to look at deaths real quick. Butch Cassidy, you know, the raindrops stopped falling on his head on this day, which I'm assuming the Sundance Kid, too. Didn't they both die when they were by the people? I think that's right. I need to go watch the movie again, but it only listed Butch Cassidy. Eleanor Roosevelt?
You can't tell in the movie.
Pardon me?
You can't tell in the movie.
Oh, that's right, because they do this kind of like the Thelma and Louise thing.
There's some evidence that he didn't die.
Oh, maybe that's why he's not in here.
He came back.
So he could still be around. That could be cool.
No, he's dead by now.
Oh, by now. Yeah. It's like the Elvis thing, right? See? You should be up here. I'm going to get you a hat. That's exactly right. You have to wear a hat to do this. Steve McQueen, we know Steve McQueen. He died on this day. Joe Frazier, the boxer, and Janet Reno. I don't know why it said all those. Anyway. One of the things I want to talk about today, just really quickly on some things, are projects. We're currently working about 15 projects. Well, actually, about 12 projects that I would consider named projects. We have seven that are active right now. Two of those are ones that we're going to discuss in executive session in just a little bit, that you guys have had some background on, but not near enough as we move forward. But they're pretty exciting projects. We have three of those that are going on. Some of the other ones that are in play, I'm not going to go through all the retail ones and restaurant ones, but we do know that Clean Control is moving rapidly. If you've been on 377 and gone by their place, they are actively renovating that location. I know it sat still for a long time. They actually contracted with us back in 2020. That was a year, of course, of pandemic and some other crazy things that were going on. So they pushed the pause button, recalculated some things, and it actually worked in our favor, because now they're bringing some bigger and better things to our area. Not as many employees. They'll probably go between 25 and 40 employees, but that's actually something that we can absorb in our community, which is nice right now. And they have already started hiring and have done a good job of that. One of the things they called me just this week on was, or just end of last week, I guess, was instead of just line workers and those kinds of things, now they're asking for such things as chemists and other types of jobs that kind of elevate their exposure here. So we'll be looking to do that. They're doing some paint water lines. They have 12 new dock doors, windows, internal work that they're doing, some bathrooms, fire suppression. And soon they'll repay the parking lot. Of course, they won't do that till they get a lot of these other things dug up and all. It's sort of the last deal, but that'll kind of put that finishing touch on the look over there, which will be nice. You know, one of the things that we look at with these buildings are legacy buildings that sometimes kind of fall in disrepair. And so when people invest in those buildings, regardless, and of course, I have no doubt that they will be hugely successful in Stevensville, but regardless, if they were to move on, we still have a building that can be marketable to the next in line. So that's a good one. And speaking of buildings, we have made a few changes or making a few changes, some more changes to our facade grants. You may recall, not terribly long ago, we upped the amount. We actually doubled it from 5,000 to $10,000 on our end, which is 50% match to others whenever they invest in these buildings. And these are, again, for primarily our existing businesses here in town or those that are starting businesses here in town, usually small businesses, not always. But, and then we have this facade improvement grant program that has helped over 35 businesses so far upgrade their buildings, which makes the entire community a little bit nicer with every chance that we get. So we're very excited about that. One of the things, whenever we look at these industry pieces, you know, we think, well, do we have enough jobs for them? And that's always a concern, because that's what we hear sometimes. We have made a little bit of a stride towards helping that down the road. It's going to be a long-term project, but as I've mentioned in previous reports here, we started a career club at the high school with the help of the North Central Texas Workforce Solutions Group, as well as the high school itself, who are all in. We started looking at the seniors of our class. I know we can all say, well, we need to get them excited earlier than that, but the seniors happen to have about a half-day of school, it seems like, almost everybody, which is crazy and cool at the same time, if you're a senior, I guess. So we have a lot of opportunity to get these guys involved and connect the dots between just school, which seems to be over here these days, and work, which is over here. We need to gap that, bridge that gap somehow, not gape it, but bridge the gap, excuse me, and try to get those workers, those kids excited about the opportunities for work. And one thing we need to make sure that we don't do is we need to quit separating people into college means white collar and non-college means blue collar, because that's just not the thing anymore. We just need to give all of them an opportunity to perhaps have a job and get excited about wanting to work down the road. So we started the career club. I've mentioned it before. We've already had two or three events so far. They've got a lot of swag, a backpack full of all kinds of goodies in here that's helping them, that's branded and all. They've, we had a kickoff dinner, nice fajita dinner for them and their parents to get excited about it, because if their parents and all those that are most involved in their lives, which grandparents, uncles, aunts, whoever it is, if they're not excited about it, it's going to be difficult to get these kids excited. So we've gotten them involved. We started having some one-on-one interviews with them, and so far, out of this class, we have about 11% of the entire senior class already excited about it. And we've got about 28 kids, almost 30 kids, already signed up and coming to the different things during Schwarm and other parts of their school programs. Big shout out to the high school, the counselors, the administrators, all the way up to the superintendent, are supporting this wholeheartedly and are helping us to get this going. Next week, we start their field visits of actual getting out into these companies. And while we are starting with industries, we are not holding it just to industry. Right now, it's just easier to validate those kinds of visits whenever they can go to those. So I actually made a mistake yesterday. Mark, I know you were at our meeting. They're actually going first to outlaw conversion. They're actually going first to Outlaw, Conversions, and to Palcon, and then they will go to Prime and to FMC about two weeks later. And so this semester, we're working on getting them exposure to those places, but not only exposure that way, but exposure back the other direction. The idea is, in a little while, next spring, we will start a career academy, start teaching them some of these things that we have been wrongly accusing the kids of not being ready to work. Well, that's not the kid's fault, it's everybody else's fault, including my own and everybody else in this room, probably. So we're going to work on correcting that and getting the kids as ready as possible so that whenever they do that application, it goes to the top of the pile whenever they're ready to go and, and join the workforce. And that they're already excited about it and not looking for just a little jingle in their pocket, but they're actually looking to have something that leads towards a career. Now, all of these things still lead to a potential for education. I want to make that clear. When they get into this career club opportunity, they're, they're looking to perhaps get their education paid for. Some of these people pay for their entire education. Now, that education is, may or may not be a four-year education at a university. It may or may not be a two-year education at a junior college. It may or may not be just a class or a set of classes or certification. It doesn't matter. It's whatever helps them to create an opportunity to be workforce contributors, and then, of course, that means community contributors, right? So that's what we're looking forward to doing, and we're, they're excited, they're on fire, their parents are on fire, the teachers are on fire, and, oh, and that's another thing. We're going to start, and we've already had it initially approved at least, with a teacher externship program that will now get, after starting next year, the teachers in the workforce. So just teaching the different classes that they have. Now, they're going to actually go out into these businesses and see what it is that they're teaching for. And it's so we can, again, connect the dots. So parents, kids, teachers, all in the, in the workforce, I think we're going to make a difference down the road. Now, it's going to take a little bit, but we're going to make a difference. So I invite all of y'all to be involved with that where you can. With that, I think that's it for now. Any other questions?
Appreciate it. Any questions for you?
All right, thanks.
Consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we approve consent as presented.
Second. Motion is second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, council, reminder, this Friday, November 10th, city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Saturday, if everybody will remember, we'll have a Veterans Day ceremony down here on the courthouse square. City offices will also be closed November 23rd and 24th in observance of Thanksgiving. Reminder, one more time, November 16th, that evening will be the next open house for the comprehensive plan. And I want to say welcome to our new deputy city secretary, Ms. Jacey Wood. So everybody say hi to her.
Leanne.
I wanted to go on record that I was vetoed on starting Christmas music November 1st, so that's going to have to wait a couple of weeks, but.
Who voted, who voted you?
Well, I'm going to let that person remain anonymous, anonymous.
Okay.
But we've got some stuff going on downtown the next couple of weeks. The holiday open house for the downtown businesses will be on the 17th, and I think that's when my hall and my Christmas music is going to start. And then. Do what?
It's a sore spot.
It is, it is. And then we have Christmasville on the 25th, so businesses will be open all day, and then we'll have the parade, fireworks, all of that. And I hope everybody went out and voted, so.
Just, no comments.
I'll help you out, Leanne. How about getting, everyone at my house is mad at me right now, because I keep watching the Christmas Hallmark channel. Because they always come out good at the end.
Yes.
And I like something good at the end.
Exactly.
Sorry, everybody.
No comment.
No comment.
No comments.
Mark?
No comments, sir.
Only thing I have is last night, our state comptroller, public council president Hager was at Tarleton and spoke to a group of students, did a really good job. I did ask one question, and I should have said it during your report, asking that you hear about the economy cooling some, and he says that he anticipates that in the United States there will be a mild recession beginning the next, for the next fifteen months. He said, however, Texas will not experience that. He said Texas is growing so fast. Right now, we're averaging, he said, twelve hundred new citizens in Texas every day. It's the fastest growing. And as a matter of fact, he said that Texas is the fifth largest economy in the world. In the world. And so it's a, it is, it was good news, and so I was asking specifically because of our economy here in Stevensville, and he says, don't expect it to slow down at all, it'll just keep on going. And the last thing I have is related to Veterans Day. My seven-year-old granddaughter is giving a veteran's speech Thursday night. I will miss it, but my, it's in honor of my father, who has thirty, was thirty-four years military experience, veteran of four wars. And so I, I'm excited about her, and I'll get a video and I'll share it with everybody one night. With that in mind, we're going to go into compliance with the provision of Texas Open Mediums Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Code, Texas Code annotated, according to Section 551.074 Personnel Matters dot oh eight seven, Delivery for Economic Development Negotiations, 55107, Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and oh seven one, Consultation within our attorney. We'll stay in recess and come back. Sir, for your prayers. Thank you very, and welcome to Stevensville.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the changes to the SEP program for the directors as listed and discuss in executive session.
Second.
Take a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. It is now seven fifty-four and we will stand adjourned.
Thank you.